The L.A. River. Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell recently celebrated Annual L.A. River Day here at City Hall. And really, this event serves as a way to educate Angelenos about the resources that are available along the L.A. River. Dozens of exhibitors came out to this year's second annual L.A. River Day at City Hall, put on by Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell.
When it was channelized in the 1930s, it really did degrade the habitat. And it enabled development to go right up against the river. But it really also kind of killed the river at the same time. So River Day is a way to promote the fact that we are reinvesting and bringing it all back to life.
The billion-dollar revitalization plan includes enhancing areas along the 51-mile-long river, transforming the channel into an upscale amenity for Los Angeles.
I'm working on enhanced increment financing, which would create a 45-year plan and a permanent revenue stream for all of the things that we want to do at the river. It would call for brownfield remediation, habitat restoration, infrastructure improvements. And it could also go toward low-income and moderate-income housing.
Green spaces, bike paths, and recreational activities are some of the improvements that have been seen along the L.A. River.
L.A. River revitalization is one of Mayor Garcetti's top priorities. He joined councilmembers in the valley to open two new segments of the river bike path.
The L.A. Conservation Corps launched the first paddle of the L.A. River more than four years ago. And so we're really happy that that has then turned into a river or paddle of the river in the Elysian Valley, along with ours in the Sepulveda Basin, and a lot of other recreational and fun activities on the river. So it's really served to really get people's interest, as well as recognize the conservation and environmental importance of the L.A. River.
According to Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, one-quarter of L.A.'s population lives in one mile of the L.A. River. So by improving the L.A. River also means helping improve people's lives. Yana?
Rasha, thanks. And Councilmember Tom Labonge was also honored for his continuous support of the L.A. River. In fact, a portion of the L.A. River is now open to the public for weekend kayaking all summer long. As Gil Reyes shows us, you don't have to travel out of state or even out of the valley to enjoy this one-of-a-kind water sport.
No, we're not in Lake Tahoe, the Kern River, or even Castaic. We're near the heart of the San Fernando Valley, believe it or not, Lake Balboa. Not far from suburban homes lies this hidden oasis with chirping birds and native plants.
It's fun just to be out here in nature and see different things, you know? Like, you don't see this in L.A. all the time.
Didn't even realize that this is...
No, I didn't even realize that this was here. It's my first time actually being here, so it's pretty cool.
It is the only city-sponsored kayaking expedition in the San Fernando Valley. The 2015 Paddle the L.A. River program is off and running. And as you can see, we're off and running with guided tours that will take place Friday, Saturdays, and Sundays practically every weekend till September 20th.
Are we going in?
You're going in the white one?
Area Councilmember Nury Martinez helped kick off the program's fourth season. As former executive director of the group Pacoima Beautiful, she's helped maintain this one-and-a-half-mile stretch of the L.A. River for public use.
So that communities like San Valley and Arlita and Pacoima, that these communities not only would appreciate the natural habitat along the Wash, but also create more activity, physical activity for these communities.
First-time kayaker Anahi Godinez was worried at first. Is it what you expected?
No, I thought it was gonna be, like, way harder, but it's not.
And then are you gonna tell your friends?
Yes, of course I'm gonna tell them. I'm gonna go home and put it on Instagram and on Facebook everywhere.
A summer of memories awaits. At the L.A. River, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The guided trip costs $50 for adults. You can purchase tickets online at paddeltheleariver.org. And this week, we continue our look at how a new city initiative called City Link L.A. will bridge the gap between those who have internet and those who don't. Checking email or doing a Google search on your smartphone or computer has become part of daily life for many Angelenos. And while access to high-speed internet may not be an issue, it is for many others in the community, creating what's called a digital divide. The term describes a connectivity gap among distinct, mostly low-income neighborhoods. Digital divide experts say this gap is caused by several factors.
Cost is one of the barriers. People who just don't have access to it because maybe there isn't an available offer in their particular neighborhood, or people who just aren't aware of it.
According to recent surveys, about 35% of Angelenos do not have high-speed internet. That's why they have to rely on community centers like the Magnolia Place to get connected. While community centers do offer internet access, computer use and center hours are limited. Other community members who do have a computer or smart device usually end up at libraries in search of free internet.
I can go to a number of libraries around the area. Late at night, you go by, and sometimes you see libraries closed, but you see a family in their car connecting to the internet service that's at that library because they're offering what's great, they're offering that free service. But those students are gonna have, you know, are having to travel all the way there just to get that connectivity.
But Councilmember Bob Blumenfield and L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti want to make sure everyone is connected at home and at work through a new initiative called City Link L.A., which will provide high-speed internet and Wi-Fi to residents and businesses throughout all of L.A. And for those who don't have computers, city leaders are working on that, too, through a program called Our Cycle L.A., where old city computers are refurbished and then donated to those who need them.
Welcome to your new computer. This is the monitor.
I never had a computer in my life, and this is my first one.
We'll start with the horizontal line.
Computer training is also part of the program, where instructors guide users through the basics, another step towards getting everyone in L.A. up to speed with access to vital information.
Critical content that really is going to improve their educational and economic outcomes.
City leaders hope to break ground next year. Now, what does the LAPD and the L.A. Dodgers have in common? Well, they're both pictured on some new baseball cards. That's the focus of This Week in Tweets.
I'm Charlie Beck, Chief of Police in the City of Los Angeles. We're bringing back one of LAPD's most popular laser-stippling tools, and that's the baseball cards.
In the '80s and '90s, LAPD officers gave out Dodger baseball cards to kids in our community.
So we attached that positivity to law enforcement's police officers, and it motivated me, inspired me to want to be that person.
The Los Angeles Police Department released a video on Twitter promoting its latest effort to strengthen community ties. The LAPD and the Los Angeles Dodgers have come together to create special edition LAPD Dodger baseball cards, bringing back a tradition that LAPD began more than 30 years ago. Back then, the Police Department and the Dodgers launched a baseball card program to create a connection between community and law enforcement. And now, thanks to a contribution from the L.A. Police Foundation, the program is back. Chief Charlie Beck tweeted #BaseballCardsAreBack. Check out the great LAPD video announcing our community partnership with the Dodgers. And the cards are already putting smiles on plenty of kids' faces. Enzo A. tweeted a pic of a girl holding an LAPD Dodger baseball card. He tweeted, "Great neighborhood event in Highland Park today, LAPD softball game." He also tweeted a pic of the kid smiling and showing off their new baseball cards. He posted, "Baseball cards for the team." And LAPD 77th Street tweeted an adorable pic of a boy holding up two baseball cards. The post read, "Another happy customer." The cards feature a Dodger player and a member of either the LAPD or the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And that's a look at This Week in Tweets. While a charter school is honored again for their academic excellence, the city attorney's office promotes gun safety, and some low-income families celebrate a new place they can call home. All these stories and more in City Beat. Councilmember Mitch Englander recently unveiled an official City of Los Angeles street sign honoring the Granada Hills Charter High School's academic decathlon team, which won its fourth national title in five years. The 2015 sign was placed underneath the 2011, 2012, and 2013 dedications. Englander said the sign will serve as a permanent display of achievement and success to the entire community and future students, that by working together, studying, and persevering, kids can get a great education in Los Angeles and reach their dreams. Granada Hills Charter remains the only charter school in the almost 35-year history of the National Academic Decathlon Competition to claim the national title, and the only public school, traditional or charter, to capture the national title three years in a row, and now four times in five years.
Tommy was five when he killed his two-year-old sister.
With a single shot fired from a small rifle, he received for his birthday.
Los Angeles City Attorney Mike Fuhr called for a renewed nationwide commitment to end gun violence during the first-ever National Gun Violence Prevention Day by unveiling a public service announcement urging the safe storage of firearms. This 30-second television spot highlights tragic instances of guns killing children and asks the public to lock up your guns.
Lock up your guns?
Fuhr also announced that his office filed misdemeanor charges against 10 people for alleged gun crimes. The gun charges were filed over the past month and vary from unlawful possession to concealment of weapons. At the news conference, Fuhr was joined by representatives of Women Against Gun Violence, which produced the PSA, and the Violence Prevention Coalition. The next ciclovia, which opens roads to bicyclists, pedestrians, and other non-car traffic, will be held in Culver City and Venice this summer. The six-mile route will encourage people to walk or bike between Culver City and the beaches of Venice by way of Palms, Mar Vista, and other beachside neighborhoods. Officials said participants will be able to explore diverse neighborhoods, discover new businesses, and even take a dip in the Pacific. The festival is scheduled for August 9th from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. Community members recently celebrated the grand opening of a new apartment complex for low-income families in Boyle Heights. The 53-unit complex replaces a blighted property that once housed a bar and nightclub. The energy-efficient apartment building will also offer services to residents such as classes in English, parenting, nutrition, health, and finances. More than 2,000 community members applied for apartments.
I'm thankful and I'm grateful, you know, that they did this because it's helpful for other people, like especially us, that we don't make that much. And I'm grateful that they thought about us.
The residents said that they wanted to see something positive here, like housing and retail space, and we were able to make that vision a reality.
Officials say they are planning more housing projects that will include the opportunity for homeownership. Never-before-seen photos of Marilyn Monroe now on display. Some animated Disney classics come back to life, and Hello Kitty pulls out all the stops for fans. All this in This Week's Things to Do. Here's your chance to see Marilyn Monroe like you've never seen her before. This year marks the 53rd anniversary of Monroe's passing, and the Hollywood Museum is currently hosting an exhibit that runs June 3rd until September 22nd. Highlighting the exhibit will be works by guest author and photographer George Barris, best known for his work with Marilyn and the last photographer to have a session with her before her death. He will exhibit never-before-seen pictures of the Hollywood starlet. On display will be items from Monroe's childhood, film costumes, public appearance gowns, personal clothing, jewelry, furniture, makeup, medication, found on the nightstand the night of her death, memorabilia, and more. The Hollywood Museum is located at 1660 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood. For more information, visit thehollywoodmuseum.com. Experience the joy of film with live orchestral music as the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra screens animated shorts from Walt Disney Animation Studios, some which haven't been seen in more than 50 years. Conducted by six-time Emmy Award-winning conductor and composer Mark Waters, the orchestra performs live music with cartoons from the Walt Disney Vault and more. Projecting on the silver screen, two previously lost and newly restored Oswald Lucky Rabbit shorts, Poor Papa and Africa Before Dark. Also premiering are orchestral scores written by Mark Waters. Celebrating its 80th anniversary, Silly Symphony Music Land will be screened for the first time with a live orchestra. Don't miss these timeless classics. The screenings take place on Saturday, June 13th at 7:00 p.m. at the Theater Ace Hotel, located at 929 South Broadway. For more details, visit laco.org/venue. Hello Kitty is hitting the road with her first-ever live entertainment show and North American tour. On June 12th through the 14th, the fabulous Forum in Inglewood will play host to all things Hello Kitty with a super cute friendship festival. The event will feature live entertainment, cosplay, characters, interactive exhibits, and more. Join the fun, friendship, and festivities with multi-stage live performances, interactive entertainment, fashion, photo opportunities, and lots of special Sanrio surprises. The fabulous Forum is located at 3900 Manchester Boulevard in Inglewood. For more information and to buy tickets, visit sanrio.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and you can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Sargent, if I could ask that you start calling the council offices and asking them to make their way to council chambers. Councilmember Tom Labonge in the House. Good morning, Mr. Labonge. Councilmembers Sadio, please make your way to council chambers as well. Councilmembers Huizar, Parks, and Price.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, June 12th, and we are live on Channel 35 as well as streaming on the Internet. We do have several presentations, so we're going to ask first and foremost, if you have an item that you would wish to speak on, please fill out a comment card and give it to the sergeant at the ropes, or one for general public comment, and if you can go ahead and submit those, we'd appreciate that. We're also going to ask that you stick to the agenda items. If you fell out of court on a specific item, please speak to that specific item. And also, keep the aisles clear. Unless you actually have a presentation, unless you have a presentation or you're speaking at the podium, you will not be allowed to stand in the center aisle. So if you need to get up and leave the meeting, that's fine, but you will not stand in the center aisle. It'll be disrupting this meeting, so we're going to give that warning as well. And also, for the viewers and our audience, it is... Every day is Free Speech Day here today, as you will see and recognize. And so with that, we want to turn it over to Councilmember Herb Wesson for a special presentation.
Good morning, good morning, and thank you, Mr. President, and want to welcome all of our visitors that are here today, especially those that we're going to recognize. For me, today is Dog Adoption Friday. We in the City of Los Angeles have been doing this for 10 years. We have a 100% adoption rate. Today, I present to you a shy Palm is her name. And Palm is a Chihuahua mix. She's approximately one years old, a year old, and she's looking for a home. She is ready to go. She's had her shots and spayed, and so... This is as big as she's going to get. She is looking for unconditional love. And I'm asking for the people in the audience today, for those that are watching us on Channel 35, for those that are listening to us on the council phone or whatever, to come down and save this puppy's life. Even though we do the very best that we can to get our dogs adopted, it is a big challenge. So when you adopt one of our rescue dogs, you are literally saving that animal's life. We have, again, a 100% adoption rate, and we're trying to find the perfect mom and dad, or grandma, or big brother for Palm. Again, she's a Chihuahua mix, about a year old, has all of her shots. Mr. Coretts, she was found in your area or turned in from your area, so that means you get first dibs. If you'd like to bring home another dog and deal with the wrath of your wife, I will definitely let you take this dog. But the Coretts are animal lovers. And so now, what do we have here? On June 14th, 13th, and 14th, we're going to have adoption for cats at a reduced rate, and it will be in all of our shelters throughout the City of Los Angeles. So if you are a cat person, again, on June 13th and 14th, visit one of our shelters and adopt your cat at a reduced rate. Is it... Do we know how... How reduced? It's still a bargain. But look at this face. I want everybody that's watching it on television, listening. We're going to keep Palm with us for a bit, so if you need to come down and take photographs to send to, you know, your wife, or husband, or roommate, she'll be available for that. But again, save a life. If you ever wanted unconditional love, then this little puppy, this little Palm, is a lady that can deliver that for you. So again, we're going to keep her for a while as we try to find a home for you. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you for my morning kiss. Anyway, members, if we can please call in, come down, let's get Palm adopted today. Bets, you want to take a couple of photos? No, you get in with it. Mr. President, thank you, and we will have Palm in the back.
Now, I know we have 100% adoption rate here on those Fridays. Do we know how many total have been adopted?
It's the last, the last report that I got, it was about six months ago. We had adopted about 130. We had 130 dogs adopted.
That's incredible. Let's give him a round of applause. Great, thank you very much, I really appreciate that. And colleagues, let's go ahead and run through the agenda first. If we could, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Busciano, Sadio, Leonard Fuentes, Huizar, Coretts, Corrine Labonge, Martinez, O'Farrow, Parks, Price, and Wesson, 10 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfeld moves, Mr. Huizar seconds. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Labonge moves, Ms. Martinez seconds.
Mr. President, before getting into today's agenda, there's been a request from a member to continue Item 1A for one week. That brings us to June 19. Again, Item 1A to June 19.
That'll be the order without objection, no problem. Thank you so much. Next items, please.
Very good, sir. Items 1 and 2 are items known as for public hearing.
Okay, and we have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on both items.
We'll go ahead and hold those on the desk. Next items, please.
Items 3 and 4 are items which public hearings have been held. A committee report for Item 4 has been circulated.
Okay, and colleagues, do we have any specials on items either 3 or 4? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Great, those are approved, thank you so much. Next items, please.
Items 5 through 12 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, that'll be the order, and those items are now before us. Do we have cards on those specific items?
Yes, sir, cards on all items except for number 10.
Okay, number 10 will be before us, colleagues. Do we have a special? Mr. Parks.
Special on number 9, and we've asked out of order, we have a family member here.
We will take that out of order for Mr. Parks. And so, Item 10, colleagues, do we have a special? Seeing none, no cards on that item. We'll go ahead and open the roll on Item 10. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Great, that is approved, thank you so much. All right, and good morning. Councilmember Sadio here is here as well, and we're going to go back over to presentations. Let me just first ask before we go to presentations. Mr. Parks, did you want to take Item 10, or I'm sorry, 9, prior to the presentations?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, before we do that, I do believe we have cards on 9. Before I go to the cards, I'm going to ask the... We have three cards from Herman, John, and Michael. I'm going to let you know that the family members are here and ask, I know you have cards on all the other items as well, did you still wish to speak on this specific item? We are... Oh, by the way, before we call you up, we are in a very tight quorum today, and because of that, all items for public comment will be held a one minute, as we often do on a tight quorum. We have several members out. And so with that, the family is here on Item 9. I'd like to ask Herman, John, and Michael, did you still wish to speak? Or did you wish to waive it and speak on your other items instead? Pass, thank you, John. Herman? Pass, thank you. Michael? I'm sorry? Did you wish to speak on this item or speak on your other items instead? The family is here. Okay.
My deepest sympathy to the Escobar family for this tragic tragedy in Los Angeles. I hope we could all get along and come together, helping one another as we should as Americans. My condolences to this family, and it's just a shame that the disrespect of one another in our community falls apart because of broken windows by the LAPD. But I'm sure in the future, we're going to have better issues to address with Charlie Chief Beck and, for the record, Eric Garcetti. Please help this family out. I'm sure they're in a little financial need, and you can take it out of the special funds of the city to help them out with the, you know... So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Englander.
Thank you.
Give me the one. Could you please let me finish?
Thank you.
You're cutting out... I have seven seconds, sir. I just want to say my deepest apologies to the family and concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt.
Good evening. I shall speak not only for the family, but for a better law enforcement team to protect and serve the Los Angeles and the Los Angeles Linos. Tragedy in anybody's family, death in anybody's family should not be allowed. We should serve and protect all of our members of Los Angeles and Los Angeles City. On my behalf in the African-American community, we hope that these people get funded and get support to support their family in burying them and doing whatever. My name is Michael Hunt. I take this very seriously, and the family should be... We should all pitch in to help the family. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
I'd like to thank Mr. Herman and Mr. Hunt for being respectful on those, both of those items. Thank you very much. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. We have today sister of one of the victims, Kenya Escobar. When asked to come to the podium, she does not wish to speak, but she wanted to be here today. We're asking for a $75,000 reward on an incident that occurred January 2015 at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. Jose Escobar and William Barrera were walking on the center median of Crenshaw Boulevard just north of 59th Street when an unknown suspect fired multiple gunshots at both victims from an unknown-type handgun. The suspects fled the crime scene southbound on Crenshaw, then westbound on 59th Street to an unknown location. Mr. Escobar was struck several times by gunfire. He was transported to a local hospital where he expired due to his injuries. Mr. Barrera was not struck by gunfire, but the officers are asking, during their continuing investigation, that we provide this reward for the homicide dealing with Mr. Escobar and the attempted murder of Mr. Barrera. This $75,000 reward is hopeful that they will bring additional leads to this case. Anyone having information, we ask that you contact Detective Zink and Esparo at Criminal Homicide Gang Unit at 213-485-1383. And we ask for a unanimous vote, and thank the parent, the family, for being here, and we hope that this reward will help solve this case.
Great, thank you very much. Colleagues, I would urge your eye vote as well, and our sympathies on behalf of the entire city to the family as well. We're asking for anybody with information to please step forward. Thank you, Mr. Parks. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much, appreciate that, colleagues. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Mitchell O'Farrow for a special presentation. All right, the floor is yours.
Mabuhai, good morning and welcome. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I stand here today with our colleague Jose Huizar, representing the 14th District, Philippine Consul General Leo M. Herrera Lim, and President of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, otherwise known as LAFACE, Ms. Linda Granados. The month of June, the Philippine nation will commemorate the 117th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence from Spain that occurred on June 12th, 1898, which led to the establishment of the first constitutional republic in Asia. I am particularly proud to be here today as the representative of historic Filipino town, a neighborhood that has been home to Filipinos since the 1940s and served as a gateway for many Filipino immigrants in Los Angeles. The City of Los Angeles is home to the largest number of Filipinos living outside the Philippines anywhere in the world, and as a result, our communities are enriched wherever they live. Since Filipinos first arrived in this country, they've made significant contributions to our country's social, economic, political, educational, artistic, scientific, and entertainment communities, and I'll add boxing to that list, too. Filipinos helped build this country's infrastructure, worked in our farms, and fought valiantly in our nation's armed services, served honorably in public office. Can you believe all the LAPD officers standing with us today? And are staples in the entertainment and sports community. From labor leaders Larry Itliong and Philip Vera Cruz, to writer Carlos Bulisan, to our former city clerk June Lagmay, Filipinos have made their mark throughout this nation's history. Today, Hi-Fi, as it's affectionately known, remains as the cultural heart of the Filipino-American community in Los Angeles. Many important Filipino churches and nonprofit community organizations call Hi-Fi their home. And not far from Hi-Fi, there's another community Filipinos call home, Eagle Rock, represented by our colleague, Councilmember Jose Huizar, co-presenting this honor today. Colleagues, Councilman Jose Huizar.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrow.
You got it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrow, and thank you for your leadership in constantly raising to new levels the importance that the Filipino-American community has played in the City of Los Angeles. And I want to give a special thank you to Consul General Herrera Lim, members of the Filipino Association of City Employees, and their president Linda Granados, and everyone else who's joining us here today. I'd also like to recognize, as Mr. O'Farrow mentioned, the LAPD's Filipino-American officers, and I think there's over 20 of whom I believe are here this morning. And officers, we salute you and thank you for your service to our city. The Filipino-American story is interwoven throughout the narrative of Los Angeles, a story that goes back to our city's roots as a colonial settlement in the Spanish Empire. Now, Los Angeles is home to the largest number of Filipinos living outside the Philippines anywhere in the world. And as an immigrant, I have a great affinity with the Filipino people. I am extremely proud to represent a large and active Filipino population in northeast area of CD14. The strength and challenges and determination of the Filipino people are an important part of our city's history, and certainly, an important part of American history. This past year, our downtown community was thrilled to welcome the 23rd Annual Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture, or FPAC, which took place last October in Grand Park. My office worked closely with the organization Phil M. Arts to make it happen. The very first festival actually took place just a week after the 1992 riots, when LA was in a state of mourning in many respects. We were experiencing a crisis of cultural identity. Yet, that year, a committed group of more than 100 artists and community leaders greeted 3,000... 3,000 participants in this vibrant celebration of community and diversity. Twenty-three years later, the festival has grown to be the largest presenter of Philippine arts and culture in Southern California, attracting tens of thousands of participants from here in Los Angeles as well as across the country. Yet, not just during that festival or during these Independence Day celebrations, but every day, many Filipino-Americans from my district and across the city make essential contributions to the strength and vibrancy of Los Angeles. Their narratives as individuals, families, and communities is deeply interwoven with ours. They are part of this rich tapestry. One such person I want to acknowledge at this time is my very hard-working CD14 Planning Deputy, Kevin Okobio, who's standing right there.
Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin is an incredibly hard worker with great planning skills, but he also brings a lot of personal pride and experience in Filipino culture to our office. And in fact, I borrowed my outfit from him today, so... And so I wish you a happy Philippine Independence Day. I love this time of year when we celebrate the important contributions of Filipinos to this great city and to this great country, and also to celebrate the future with all of us. Thank you so much.
And now, I'd like to introduce Consul General Herrera Lim.
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. Mr. President, you honor our people by the ceremonies you have today. There's at least 3.4 million Filipinos in the whole of the United States, and many of them call Southern California their home. There's at least 800,000 in Southern California, almost close to 200,000 in LA alone, LA City. And some of them, or the very best of them, work for the city, about 1,700 led by Linda Granados, the woman beside me, and some of the best officers of LAPD surround us today. So I thank you for the honor on behalf of our community, and I want to especially acknowledge yourself and Mitch and Councilman Wezar, the two guys who wear our costume, our national dress. If you give me a minute, the national dress has been an imposition for us by our colonizers before. Homeland Security might love this dress because you cannot keep weapons around this dress, not even your cellphone. But we've worn it as a garment of honor, and it's a garment that we're proud of, and we thank the councilmen for wearing it today to honor our people. And give me my last few words to honor also one of your members who's been a friend of the Philippines and who will leave the council in the next coming weeks, Councilman Labonge. We thank you. We thank you for being a friend of the Philippines and for being a strong advocate of the sister city between LA and Makati. Thank you very much, Councilman Labonge. Mr. President, thank you for your leadership.
Great, thank you. Let's give him another round of applause and ask Mr. Labonge to say a few words as well, if you would.
May I just thank you very much, Consul General, for that word. The beauty of our city is our people, all our people. And the Filipino-Americans have had such a great impact here in law enforcement, but also, let's thank for all the nurses who are working throughout, every hospital, every hospital, not just in the county of Los Angeles, but throughout. And I learned my languages from the trails of Griffin Park, so when I see Filipino hiking the trail, I say "Hamagahu Maga," and then I say "Nao Ba O," is Korean for "See You Tomorrow," and they correct me. Salamat all the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Labonge, for that.
And before I introduce Linda Granados, I would like to acknowledge my staff today, and starting with Gigi Galias. Gigi, who is my office manager. And then someone who really made this presentation possible, my deputy for historic Filipino Town and who works on homeless issues, Angelo Yanko.
Angelo.
Angelo. And then lastly, honorary Filipino, William Ayala. Thank you, William. And now, the face of LAFACE, Linda Granados.
Thank you very much, Mitch, and thank you very much, Councilmember Wezar. Good morning, Councilbroadtemp Englander, councilmembers, Consul General Leo Herrera Lim, distinguished guests. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, I'm Linda Granados and honored to be the president of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees. As a Filipino organization, LAFACE's mission is not only to assist Filipinos and other employee... City employees with employment and promotion in civil service, but to assist in the economic, educational, and cultural advancement of Filipinos in the LA community. In celebrating and commemorating Filipino milestones, such as Philippine Independence Day, we hope to share our history, culture, traditions with the younger Filipino-Americans and the rest of the diverse groups of people that comprise this great big city of LA. We hope that greater knowledge and appreciation of each other's culture will build a strong sense of community. Exactly 117 years ago, on June 12, 1898, Emilio Aguinaldo issued the Proclamation of Independence from Spain. The Philippine National Anthem was first performed by the San Francisco de Malabon Marching Band, and the Philippine flag was first unfurled. Today, at City Hall forecourt, we will have a presentation of the various versions of Philippine flag as it developed into the flag used today. We invite you to join us for some Filipino culture, traditions, food, and entertainment. It's noted in the Proclamation of Independence that the colors of the Philippine flag, red, white, and blue, also held a significant reference to the US flag in gratitude for the assistance and protection lent by the United States to the Philippines. Today, the US remains a great ally to the Philippines, providing support as the Philippines reclaims its sovereign rights to some islands in the South China Sea. I would also like to acknowledge Chief Beck for allowing Faleo, the PhilM law enforcement organization, under the leadership of Vice President Vince Osorio, and the 20-something sworn officers for their presence here. As you saw, they filled up half of the Philippine portion of the seating. Again, on behalf of LAFACE and its over 2,700 members, we thank Councilmember Wezar and Councilmember O'Farrell and everyone here today for your continued support of LAFACE and the civil servants of the city of LA and the Filipino community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Therefore, colleagues, we would like to present this resolution, signed by all elected officials in the city of Los Angeles, to our Consul General Herrera Lim at this time, and kick off the celebration of the 117th anniversary of independence from Spain.
Thank you. Let's give them all another round of applause. And, Mr. O'Farrell, a framed, signed resolution as well, so thank you for that. Squeeze Mr. Labonge in there up front. Come on. Come on, Tom, get up there. And again, recognizing all of our partners in law enforcement, I see a lot of different agencies, including CHP also in the House, and many other agencies, so thank you so much. Let's give all of them another round of applause. Colleagues, we now have a special presentation from Council District III, Mr. Bob Lumenfield. You ready? The floor is yours.
Not getting a rotation.
No, it's all good. It's a hard act to follow.
The floor is yours. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I have a special presentation for someone that we all know and we all love, and we tried to bring him down here on a ruse, thinking that... Trying to tell him that something was wrong with the budget and that the numbers didn't add up, and he had to come down. He didn't fall for that, so we had to tell him why he's here. We're here to honor him, folks. I want to recognize someone who has been a true leader and a visionary in the city of Los Angeles, and we're talking about Deputy Mayor Rick Cole. And as I stand here, the team behind Rick is coming together. Rick is one of these folks. He has been committed to public service for the past 30 years. He's served as the mayor of Pasadena, the city manager of cities like Azusa and Ventura. His work to balance budgets, revitalize neighborhoods, and improve government operations are widely known. And for the last two years, as long as I can remember as a city council member, Rick has served our city admirably as deputy mayor for budget and for innovation. In that time, he has been the point man in the mayor's office responsible for city budgets of $8.6 billion, and five departments, including Budget and Finance, Information Technology, Personnel, General Services, and City Clerk. As a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, myself, and chair of the city's Innovation Committee, I really got to work closely with Rick, and it is on a number of different projects, whether it was launching the city's Innovation Fund, to crowdsource inventive new approaches to civic innovation, or working through countless hours on the exhaustive budget for which no detail was too small or too big for Rick to take seriously, weigh in on, and help forge a solution. I have found... Consistently found Rick to be dedicated, thoughtful, and creative. And he's a wonky guy, which is something that I actually really appreciate. He's been exactly the kind of leader that our city has needed over the last several years, as we've been working to get back to the basics and to turn the city around in the positive direction that it's heading in now. He has been recognized as one of Southern California's, quote, "one of Southern California's most visionary planning thinkers" by the Los Angeles Times, one of, quote, "America's Public Officials of the Year" by Governing Magazine, and along with me and our controller, Ron Galperin, he was named one of the top 25 doers, dreamers, and drivers by Government Technology Magazine this year. Cole has won numerous awards for municipal management excellence and excellence from the American Society of Public Administrators and the Municipal Management Association of Southern California, as well as the urban planning leadership from the Congress for New Urbanism. His colleagues recognize him, outside groups recognize him. When you see the works... The work that he does and the dedication that he has, it's hard not to. We have been very lucky to have Rick's leadership and expertise guiding the progression of our city here in Los Angeles. And I know that I speak not only for myself, but for all of my council colleagues, that we're not only lucky, but we're extremely grateful that we've had Rick with us this time. Sadly for us, Rick will be leaving the city of Los Angeles on June 26 to become the city manager for the city of Santa Monica. There, he will have a part-time legislature and a full-time view of the ocean. Santa Monica is going to be lucky to have him. He's gonna bring his incisive mind and analytical approach to government, his passion for doing good and better work, his zeal for civic innovation that has shaped so much of the work that he's done here today. Rick, we appreciate your leadership, exceptional service, and all you've done for the city of Los Angeles. We wish you nothing but the best on all of your future endeavors. Know that we surround you on three sides in Santa Monica, and we will be watching you and calling you in every once in a while. And before I give you your certificate, even though we surprised you, you didn't have time to prepare anything, you're never short on words, so please...
Before you do, we do have a couple other members on the queue, so I'm gonna have them, if I could, speak, and then I'll turn it over to you, and it's gonna keep popping up here. So, Councilmember Wezar, first.
Thank you, and I haven't seen this much excitement by a city for someone coming over since LeBron James went to Cleveland, but Santa Monica is really thrilled to have you. It's their gain, our loss. Job well done, Rick, and not only here in the city of Los Angeles, but your commitment to cities and planning and making sure that all people are... It's inclusive in whatever decisions we make has been outstanding. I've watched you from afar, even before I became a council member, and I've always admired your work. And I was excited to hear when you came to the city of Los Angeles, our loss for having it such a short time, but I know, given the type of person you are, whether you're working for Santa Monica or any other city, you're always looking out for the region for what's best for everyone. Congratulations on your new gig, and we will see you around. Congratulations, Rick.
Thank you. Councilmember Corret?
How hell with Santa Monica. I'm not happy about it. I wish you were here for at least a while longer. I think you've done an amazing job in a short period of time, and particularly working with you on the budget. I think this was really a terrific budget this year. I think it's no coincidence that you were involved, and I take some credit for having really good common sense, because I helped hire Rick... I shouldn't have admitted it, maybe that was what the buzz was for. I helped hire Rick about 30 years ago to be the first head of West Hollywood's Marketing Corporation to turn around the image of what was viewed as an anti-business city, and that was turned around, and that city is florished, and I give you some of the credit for that, for your good work at the time. And I've watched your career. You've done great things all over the place, and I know you will do it for Santa Monica, although, damn Santa Monica. But they're an important ally and neighbor, and we wish you well, and we know you'll do a great job for them.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much. Rick Cole, what a day, and what a human being. For many, many years, all the work you've... You really had a lot of, mostly up in the foothills, and now down here, now you're going to the coast, but from Ventura all the way to Azusa. I think of Jack Benny. Jack Benny and you are the most famous guys out of Azusa, except Christian Okoye, but the great fullback for the Kansas City Chiefs. All of that, you have, and the light rail with the goal line, all the work there, and Pasadena is the ideal city, the crown of the valley, the work that you did early on, and others, and getting the parking next to the old historic buildings and saving the buildings. If we had to do anything, Mr. Corretts, you and I were fighting this battle, others too. Saving neighborhoods and saving villages make for a better town, and that is the key. And you have a big role in Santa Monica, because there's only one way to go unless you really want to swim. You gotta come back here if you don't make it. You're gonna make it, buddy. You're gonna make it, because that Expo line's coming out, that's gonna change it, and so I'm just proud of you and your family and your girls, and you live in the 4th District, and all you gotta do is leave your house and take a right turn, and you go straight out Santa Monica Boulevard, and you hit that beautiful city of Santa Monica. So congratulations, and may it take this moment to thank all the general managers and assistant general managers who are here, who really are the fabric of these great pillars of City Hall that hold up the government, from Tony Reuster and everyone. I say Tony, because he is such a... a long-serving, I think you're the longest-serving general manager in this group right here, right there. But thank you all, Ray Chan, everybody, all the other general managers, but especially thank Rick Cole, and I'm looking forward to, in my time, finally get to Santa Monica, because I've spent most of my time in Los Angeles. A good value that they did have is you had a lot of small hotels, because we want hotels, because tourism is the number one industry. So, I think that's a good thing to look at how you do and balance it out in the wonderful city of Santa Monica. Congratulations, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And let me just add something to that before you speak and close this out. I remember your first day on the job here, and you came into my office to meet, and I begin to tell you that one of the cornerstone issues that I ran on when I first ran for office was performance-based budgeting and initiatives, developing a metrics of measurement and transparency and open data. And we really got into a deep discussion, and you'd said, "I think we're going to agree on a lot of things." And then, that same day, it just happened to be the planning report came out, and I brought it out, and I said, it was funny because it was, the front page of it was point and counterpoint. It was me and you, and it was written and printed about a month before that, and it just had come out that day. And it ended up being that, we were pretty close on in some of the things that we wanted to do together on initiatives for co-locating people and getting people to collaborate and communicate, and that was really the essence of it. You carried that through as well, in many pieces of it. But more importantly, what you've done to lead the effort in what we're going to be doing here now and forever is a real paradigm shift in how we provide services and how we measure that, how we look at not just a budget and numbers on a page, but come up with not just those efficiencies, but the measurement tools required that we'll be now utilizing. And it's still, while in its infancy, you helped lead the effort to initiate and get that started, which is the hardest thing to do, is to take a 100-year-old process and reinvent it. And you've done so with incredible passion and inspiration, and I for one truly appreciate it. The floor is yours. Mr. Cole.
Well, thank you, Mr. President Protam, and thank you to the council president and to the members of the council. This was a surprise. In fact, I was getting messages during our staff meeting that I needed to come down and deal with a major budget issue. So, I forgot to bring my jacket, so thank you, Rich Llewellyn, my partner from day one, for lending me his jacket so that I could appear before you appropriately attired. I just wished I'd had one of these Filipino outfits to blend in. Many of you know that I'm a Catholic, and so I tend to think in threes, and so I want to just touch on three things: systems, this city council, and people. But before I do that, I have to publicly say the biggest thank you of all to Mayor Eric Garcetti, the former president of this council, for calling me and asking me to join a remarkable team, many of whom are behind me. It has been my incredible privilege to work with him, and I am so proud that tomorrow, as a result of your actions, the mayor will sign a minimum wage ordinance that will help lift 800,000 Angelinos out of poverty, working people who deserve the opportunity to live in this great city. That's an extraordinary partnership, and I just am really proud to be, to have been a part of that. So, let me talk for a moment about systems. When I came here, from 30 years of local government experience, I had an impression about the city of Los Angeles. Everyone who reads the newspapers or follows the news has an impression, good, bad, or indifferent. I was astounded at how bad the business process systems of this city are, how far behind we have fallen in technology and in the systems that make the city work. But we have made so much progress in the last two years as a result of your efforts and the mayor's efforts and the general managers. We have come so far in two years. Two years ago, no one would have believed that the city of Los Angeles would win the prestigious number-one digital city in America. Two years ago, in fact, eight months ago, no one would think that Los Angeles would be ranked number-one in open data in the United States. We have come so far, and we are making such rapid progress, and we are investing in building the kind of city that you all want to serve the citizens, that the citizens elected you to do. And so, it's with enormous amount of reluctance, but a sense of pride that I step away from this work and leave it to very capable people who will carry it forward under the mayor's leadership and under your leadership. The second thing is that I had an impression of the city council, and I've had the opportunity to work now with you. And this is the best city council, individual for individual, that the city has had in the 30 years that I have followed the city of Los Angeles. And there's extraordinary depth, seriousness, and intelligence on this city council. Putting that to work in the old ways of doing business is a challenge, but you have the opportunity because of the quality of leadership and the quality of the staff. I've particularly had the opportunity, of course, to work with the five members of the Budget Committee: yourself, Councilmember Englander, the very, very able Chair, Paul Krikorian, who's just done an extraordinary job of leading the group, Councilmember Corretts, Councilmember Bonin, and of course, Councilmember Blumenfield. The citizens have no idea how many hours and what kind of depth and what kind of thought goes into developing an $8.6 billion budget process. But today, the fact that we ended up producing with a collaborative effort the best budget that the city has been able to hammer together in 10 years, is a product of your hard work, the five of you working so hard over the last two years. And of course, the partnership that we've forged between the mayor's office and the CAO is unprecedented. My colleague, Miguel Santana, and I have worked very hard to begin to restore this city to fiscal sustainability. He, of course, has been doing this for six years, and it was great to work with him and his team, with Patty, and with Ben, and with Robin, and with all of the remarkable people in that outfit. I also, you know, have had the opportunity to work with a number of the rest of the council members individually, and I don't want to mention all 15 at the risk of, but particularly Bob Blumenfield's leadership on technology has really just been exemplary, and the fact that Council President Wesson has put people like Paul Krikorian and Bob Blumenfield in positions of leadership is a remarkable foundation for making progress. So, I've begun to talk about people, so let me just finish there. Many of you may not know that my first job was right here in the city of Los Angeles. I was the third employee for Councilmember Richard Alatorre, the first Latino city council member in a generation to serve on this body. And when I came back 29 years later and met you on my first day, Councilmember Englander, only one person in the building remembered that I had been here before: Eddie Santian, who runs the parking garage. I pulled it in my Prius, and he pointed to me, he says, "Rick Cole, you're back." And the other day, he refused to allow me to park. He said, "I thought it was an utter bomb threat." And he said, "No, no, no, that way is Santa Monica." So, I had to tell him, "Eddie, I'll be back." Third time will be charmed. I'm going to serve the city of Santa Monica. It's a great city. It's going to be linked to us now with the Expo Line. It's part of this great regional network we're building. But this city is an incomparable place. There's nothing like the city of Los Angeles, where I'm proud to call my home today, where I went to college, where I have spent so much time over the last few years, and where my children are being raised, who stand behind me. I want to just say this: this is the finest group of public servants that I have ever had the privilege to work with in 30 years of public service. The people who stand behind me, the people who... The people who stand behind me and the people who I am addressing are the hope for the future, that the second-largest city in the country will reform the Department of Water and Power, will raise the wages of working people, will build affordable housing, will get back to basics, fix our streets, fix our sidewalks, trim our trees, and make this city what it can be. And I've been very proud to have served with all of you, and I want to thank you from the depth of my heart for this opportunity. You are doing great work, and it's been my proud privilege to have been part of it for these last two years. Thank you so much.
Yeah, but wait, but wait, there's more. We have another council member also that would like to add to comments and thoughts and prayers. Mr. Sadio.
So, you know, I want to say, say it isn't true, right? Mexicans like to say, "Tell me who you walk with, and I'll tell you who you are," and then you can look at how the city family has rallied behind you. They're all there with you in such a short time. I mean, there's hardly enough time to barely meet the people who are behind you, let alone for them to embrace you and embrace your leadership. So, that speaks a lot to who you are. We've known each other longer, though, and I want to share a story. What captured me for your great leadership and support and made me a fan forever was, in 1994, was a really ugly time for our city and our state. It was a difficult time because of Proposition 187, and the worst parts of us were becoming very evident, and it seemed to be the advent of, you know, shock jock radio and television, and Proposition 187 was on the ballot. And there were a few people in the state who were willing to take it on. Now, we're fortunate because the labor movement stepped up and put its full resources behind it, but I believe you were mayor of Pasadena at the time. And Pasadena is not known to be a very radical city, not a city of great innovation for stepping out there on these issues. And yet, as the mayor, you and I met at one of those rallies, right up here, it's about Avenue 50, 52, Avenue 52 in Figueroa. And there was a rally against Proposition 187, a press conference, and you were there in your capacity, in your elected office. And that meant so much to us, to have somebody who represented such a prestigious city, to be outspoken on that proposition. I'll never forget that. It's been great to have you here, because you're one of those persons who leads with your heart, but then matches it with an incredible intellect. And I'm going to miss you being around because, because few people can calibrate and match those two. And, you know, we have these shared values, and everybody in this room is here for public service, but few match it with the breadth and depth of your intellect, and then are able to understand how to apply that to the things of our heart that give us the results that we need for the city, the agenda that you laid out for us. And so, I just want to say thank you. It's great to see your kids. I know they don't remember me, but I've seen them, you know, 100 times when we would run across each other in Pasadena, what was then Bullocks before it was Macy's and throughout other locations. I'm glad that your girls look like your wife, as we talked about earlier, and your son is a chip off the old block. And so, anyway, God bless you, and it's our loss and a great gain for the city of Santa Monica.
Un abrazo amigo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Thank you very much. Let's give Rick Cole another big round of applause. Thank you very much. Hey, Rick? On your way out, on your way out, Rick. Don't let the door hit you. No, I'm just kidding. All right. No, enjoy. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, we're going to go ahead and go back to the agenda, colleagues, and if we can go ahead and look at, Item 1A was actually continued for one week. One week takes us to, oh, June 19. And so, with that, we did have a speaker card specifically on 1A. Ms. Karina Gudkava, but I want to let you know, if you're here, we're going to continue the item for one week. So, we'll go ahead and file your card for that. And then, on 1, like to call Mr. Herman?
Pass.
Pass. John Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This 1B concerns a dress on South Figueroa. This is the building and safety report for nuisance abatement costs. As I've said before, building and safety does a pretty good job on nuisance abatement. And whenever you do a good job, I'm always the first to congratulate you. And when you do a terrible job, I'm always the first to condemn you. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much, John. Mr. Hunt?
Well, actually, I'm for the public in this one. No public leans, wave all the interests, and keep on pushing, and give us our time back, our two minutes. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Thank you very much. Having no other cards on Item 1, we'll go ahead and open the roll on Item 1, and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, next item, Item 2, please. Mr. Walsh, Item 2? Pass. Mr. Herman, Item 2? Pass. All right, having no other cards on Item 2, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on Item 2, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those pass. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
That brings us to Item 5, called Special for Cards.
All right, called Special for Cards. We have one card. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns another reward. Now, you recently did pay out a reward, the first, and they have to go through the city council. First I've seen here, and I've been coming to these meetings for over a quarter of a century, first one, this reward that you're putting out, if, and the reward you gave the last time was for an Asian guy who ran somebody over, a middle-class Asian man, this, anytime you have a reward that involves a gangster who committed a crime...
You're not, you're not on the subject. We're on Item 5, Mr. Walsh. Please stay on the subject. Item 5.
You're heckling me. City attorney, I'm being heckled. Attempted murder of William Barrera.
Excuse me for one second. Hold his time. I'm going to please ask that you don't yell out or stand up and dance in the aisles. It's disruptive of the meeting, Mr. Herman, so please don't disrupt this meeting, and it is disruptive of the meeting. So, I'm going to ask that you please remain in your seat or stand in the back of council chambers. Thank you very much. Sorry for the disruption, Mr. Walsh. Your time. We'll continue.
Number, number nine, you will never, snitches get stitches.
You're on Item 5.
Item 5? Item 5, okay, Item 5, reap, we're all in favor of it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Great, thank you very much. And seeing no other cards on Item 5, we'll go ahead and open the roll on Item 5, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes, that passes. Item 6, Mr. Walsh, did you wish to speak on Item 6? Why don't you go ahead and continue on Item 7 as well, Mr. Walsh? You got a card on 6 and 7.
Item, Item 6, this is valet service. You're, we don't need to spend any time on valet, they're not going to talk about it. This is for the super rich. This is for the people who are on the other side of La Brea Avenue. And I also, that's two minutes, on all the agenda items, DNA backlog, you're way, way behind in the DNA backlog, and I also signed up for Number 11, and Number 11, you cannot believe this, ladies and gentlemen, 200 automated litter bins in District 9. When you put, we don't need automated litter bins. We can do it the way they did it in Egypt 3,000 years ago, you throw it into a box. What is automated about it? Why do we need them? They cost a fortune, and they will be destroyed by vandals within 24 hours. I'm just wondering on these litter bins in current prices district, why we don't have them in other districts? And who, where did the contract come from? And 200 automated district litter bins? But actually, I think in a good sense, it'll be, next time, the next Ezel Ford can hide behind the litter bug bins while he's being shot at.
Thank you very much. Please stay on the items. Okay. Mr. Herman on Item 7?
What about 6, sir?
You don't have a card on 6, so just speak on 7.
Well, thank you for correcting me, although that public safety meeting didn't work out. Thank you, Mr. Tifank.
Please stay, please stay on the subject, you're on Item 7. Item 7.
Well, we're talking about a budget here totaling $245,091 change for forensic DNA blocking. Now, had we had this process of DNA prepared for us, I'm pretty sure Ezel Ford never would have died.
You're not, you're not on the subject matter.
DNA, sir.
You're not on the subject matter. Stay on the subject matter.
Office of the Justice Program for violation of the rights of people with mental disabilities for future investigations in agreement for forensic DNA checking, Mr. Big Ears.
He'll stay on the subject matter.
So, I know I'm talking, subject on forensic, so from the Board of Police Commissioners, I say, Mr. Tifank, address the real issues with these knuckleheads and this horseshoe. Keep your one minute.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hunt on Item 7.
I don't have a card in on Number 6. I think I do.
You do not.
Are you sure? Check, can you double check? I put one in there, there should be one in, in, in there.
No, sir, you didn't.
Okay, I want to talk about the Board of Super, I mean, the Board of Police Commissioners and their DNA. I'm part of that system. I know about the DNA because they, they gave me a DNA test falsely. I oppose of that. I oppose of that LAPD has anything to do with that anymore. I think it should be farmed out to the FBI. And the reason why, because it's so inconclusive.
Excuse me, hold this time. Mr. Herman, that's going to be your final warning. If you're going to be standing up and flapping hands, excuse me, and disrupting the meeting, you're going to be asked to leave council chambers, so that'll be your final warning.
All right, at this point, I'm going to ask the city attorney to start governing the meeting. That's your responsibility.
Start his time, please.
That's his responsibility right there. He's the only one that can give warnings and kick people out. I know Dow versus the city of Los Angeles, why is your two minutes, that's your time?
Please stay on the subject.
I'm telling you, you threw me off my subject. I was talking, you ruled your...
I held your time, sir. Please stay on the subject.
I was talking about the DNA, and I think that you're the worst president that we ever had up there. Now, get out of that seat.
You're no longer on the subject. Thank you very much. Seeing no other cards on, on Item 6, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And we'll go ahead, and we have a recommendation for Item 7 forthwith. That'll be the order without objection. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and take the next item, please.
Mr. President, would you like to first vote on Item 7?
We'll go ahead and vote on Item 7 as well, yes. Please go ahead and open the roll on Item 7, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, thank you. Next item, please.
We'll send that forthwith. That brings us to Item 8 called Special for Cards.
Mr. Hunt, Item 8?
Let me get my agenda right. Thought I put it on 6, so it's 8. I am correctable. These motions for North, North Valley YMCA in Council District 12, recommendations for councils, actions subject to approval by the mayor. To Mayor Garcetti, subject to approval for any YMCA is great, only if you have been there and only if you have worked with the kids at the YMCA. I think that any kids in any youth program is a tremendous, great deal to the city of Los Angeles. Michael Hunt, Mayor, go out and go investigate. Thank you, Mr. Michael Hunt.
Thank you very much. Juan, Number 8?
Any item that's good for kids, it's good for everybody. You could be looking into a way to provide housing for every single kid in the city, by the way, and you can send them to the YMCA, you know, make them get strong, and the one thing I didn't like, earlier, there was too much ass kissing all around. Every single speech had nothing to do with anything else but kissing somebody's ass. Is that what you got to do to work around here? I'm running for mayor, is everybody going to be trying to kiss my ass all the time? Oh, boy. I, I don't like that. My ass is fun the way it is. I don't need it kissed.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other speaker cards, we'll go ahead and open the roll on Item 8, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 11 called Special for Cards.
Mr. Previn on Item 11?
Thank you, Mr. Englander, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2, and this does have to do with CD9, as somebody pointed out, it's a Price Wesson motion to acquire and install about $42,000 worth of automated litter bins, which is about 200 of them. My question is, is this a part of the mayor's big initiative, which I think is so exciting? He rolled out a 5,000 trash can initiative. This, I think, is more tied to AB 1290. But the question I have is, is automated litter bins really the way to go going forward? You know, once they're automated, they need to be serviced, and I'm not sure that, I've seen the good technology for automated litter bins. Again, you know, this may be something that's very cutting-edge and vanguard, but, but it worries me a little bit. Why not just ordinary litter bins? And regarding the mayor's 5,000, I assume at some point, there'll be a kind of a big scheme of what the plan is, where they go. I think that rolls out over a couple of years, and we had, at one point, I read 4.1 million earmarked, now it's, I think, 9.1 million, and I think that also includes a, a visit to every council district once a month.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Herman? Followed by John Walsh, followed by Mr. Hunt, followed by Mr. Akala.
Mr. Speaker, I believe the gentleman was correct regarding 200 automated litter bins in Mr. Current Price's district. That area has been targeted by debris, trash, litter, and at what expense? At the expense of your constituents, the stakeholders, the residents that live there and put up all the garbage on a daily basis, because again, you, sir, Mr. Speaker, and your staff of councilmen do not represent the district well. To provide adequate services for cleaning up all the debris and the trash left by your residents, who no longer reside there because of the injunctions, because of the imminent domain of your illegal process of fraud and waste and abuse, you can keep your last three six seconds, Mr. Big Ears.
Yes, Mr. Labonte?
I just want to thank Mr. Price for the excellent job he's doing in the New Ninth and transforming the area and working with our Bureau of Sanitation. This opportunity is open to all of us, and these containers will prevent trash and debris from going down the drains, keeping the bay healed. So, good job, Mr. Price. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I challenge you, bring in one of these trash cans and show us how it works. Is there anybody who's ever seen one of these cans?
Yeah, I have.
One guy. I'm telling you right now, the vandals in my neighborhood who will pay off the cops to terrorize us in Hollywood, they'll destroy these litter bins within 60 seconds. Thank God Labonte is on his way out. HollywoodHighlands.org, you can know, you know what you can do with the extra 30 seconds.
Extra trash bins in the neighborhood for Price and Herb Wesson is a very good idea. Now, to actually maintain those trash cans and to keep them working is another $50,000. So, actually, the payment should be almost $92,856 in any community you have maintenance to maintain those trash cans and to maintain the area that these trash cans are being serviced in. So, in my opinion, I want to take this one off the agenda and put $92,856 on budget for these two guys. So, let's get that done, and let's get it done correctly. Let's interact with the actual budget and the service of the trash cans. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Wow, you know how many Mexicans you could hire to clean up your city with that kind of money? My God, and it would be clean, and your streets would get repaired, and your sidewalks would get repaired. The trash cans are just a stupid way to put out money that is not really, those, those trash cans are not worth anywhere near. I've seen those damn trash cans in Venice. They, they don't work. They're stupid. They get solar powered, and the people go, what, what is this piece of junk? It's ridiculous. Just put a damn trash can there and, and let, let the community clean up the city. Stupid asses.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other speakers and no more cards, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, thank you. Next item, please.
That brings us to Item 11 called Special for Cards. Pardon me, sir, that's 12.
Okay, Item 12? Herman, do you wish to speak on this item?
Yes, E L F, Elf. Regarding the Attachment B here, is the way wezar stands here, the oral report by Kevin James today under Item 8 suggesting that we have a fiscal period here to utilize both federal and state dollars for capital project improvements by using grants or bonds. 14 grants unused, 11 grants unused. How despicable is that, all you taxpayers? Despicable? Yes. Improvement for project infrastructure funds not being used and going to waste, and now at the last second or minute, this city council is producing the same inadequate service under programs, activity, and service. I hold you accountable, Mr. Eric Garcetti. Use the bonds and the grants as you're supposed to, federal dollars.
Thank you very much.
I personally think you can fix all the problems in the city with federal money because they're the ones that print it. All that money is just funny money, and we're so advanced now that, why do we have to tax the people over and over just to get things done? Are, are, are we still as stupid as the founding fathers were? Are we that stupid?
Please stick to the item.
Oh, yeah, the item is, is transfer appropriate $42,000. City clerk, what does that mean? Huh? What the hell does this mean? You probably don't even know, just like those damn trash cans.
I'm sorry, sir, you're out of time, but thank you very much. That concludes the items for, you're out of time. Excuse me, sir, you're out of time. You are out of time. Thank you, sir. So, with that, we'll go ahead and conclude that item for cards. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, and Mr. Clerk, where does that take us?
Mr. President, that takes council to general public comment.
All right, I think there's a bit of reality I have, I have to introduce to a lot of people here. In the recent days, I think it should be clear, some House Democrats like John Conyers from Michigan and others are fully aware that Obama and others have been training Nazis, that is, in Ukraine. Now, when you have a president that does that in a citizenry, where do they come in at that point? I know people say never again, but here you have an example of patriots who are making aware to the public that Nazis are being backed in order to fight the Russians, so-called threat. It's a lie. So, there are many other things like financial collapse that the Greek situation can bring, but again, Obama has to be impeached, and the Glass-Steagall Act has to be reinstated.
Thank you. John Walsh? Followed by Herman? Followed by Eric Previn?
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, Rick Cole, Density Hawk, used to be the mayor of Pasadena. He got a better office, so he left. Good, stay away. Okay, I want to tell you right now, especially anybody who's African-American from Ezel Ford's neighborhood, if you go to Which Way LA, the president of the cop union announced there is a slowdown of police services in your neighborhood by the union. They're not getting out of the cars, they're not responding, because it's time to show you, black people, who runs this city, and it's the white cops, and you... you black people who runs this city, and it's the white cops, and you better learn the way Whitey Weston did to get down on your knees and do the Lewinsky job for any cop. There's a slowdown going on right now by the LAPD, and everybody up there goddamn well knows it.
It's in the news.
Herman?
Don't shoot, don't shoot. I can't breathe. I can't breathe. Daddy, daddy! Ezel Ford, Ezel Ford, a mentally challenged man, an individual, did not deserve to die in Los Angeles, nor will there be any other deaths involved in the lives of any human being in Los Angeles. Because, again, we are going to address you council members for the harsh actions of your inappropriate action to respond by violence, violation of the American Disability Act towards persons. You forget about the Awareness Act, Mr. Big Ears. I'm talking. Hello? But you don't care. See, the same reason Soboroff cried and walked away from all those people while we were at the meeting. Such hilarious, incompetent, incoherent, psychological anger by all of you. Psychological anger, Mr. Englander, as you speak up there. The impact.
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you. Have a seat. Have a nice weekend. Thank you very much. Hunt? Whoever's at the podium first, you guys can fight it out.
Okay, here's where I want to get at. I present to you guys a ticket with a $100 bill that's costing the city $120,000. Why? Because they're jackasses. Hunt versus the City of Los Angeles is getting ready to go back to court at LAX. A $100 ticket costing the city $120 million. Mike Fur versus ninth-circuit winner Michael Hunt twice in the same event, outside vending. Have you ever heard of so, so much bullshit? See, and this is what gets back to, I'm going to give Mike Fur till next week to, to, to get off this thing. Chief Charlie Beck is a train wreck. Whoever write tickets for outside vending, don't know what the fuck they doing. I'm a ninth-circuit winner. It's a goddamn shame. You can give me the $100,000, I'll take off another year, but it's a goddamn shame that we waste all this money in our court system for a $100 ticket.
Thank you very much.
How do you expect poor people to support your city when you only support the rich? You want everything to be, uh, what's that word you use? Uh, richified? There's another word for it. But, uh, you know, they use it in Venice, they use it here, uh, glamorized, uh, stupefied? Oh, gentrified? That's equivalent to all that shit I just said. It's the same thing. Poor people cannot afford your bullshit. We do not to be gentry. Well, the gentry in England were the stupid assholes doing the jobs for the royalty. Gentrified? You guys are stupid. You don't even know English. Gentrified means shit. Nothing.
Thank you very much. Final speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. It's Eric Previn, a CD2 resident, and I must tell you, if there really is a quorum, it is, it's an interesting way of counting. I can't count 11 people here, but, you know, maybe you could do that just before we go. Maybe they'll show up for the end. Anyway, I wanted to comment today about Edgar Kaladian, who works at Mayor Brown. This is a guy who bundled, or delivered, I guess, 7,000 to Mr. Weezer during this last campaign. This is up at the Ethics Commission, and another 7,000 through Mayor Brown. What caught my attention was, didn't Mayor Garcetti appoint this guy to the zoning advisory? And wouldn't that be perceived as a little too close for comfort here in the greatest city of ethics in Los Angeles? I, I know the guy, because he canoodled with the Krikorian regarding the Harvard-Westlake Bridge Over Coldwater program, but I don't know if that is considered appropriate, or maybe it's a badge of honor to be so inside. It worries me because some of the residents, like, for example, the Save Coldwater people and the people in Studio City who are facing a variety of issues with regards to zoning across the board, are worried that this kind of influence is getting the better of, of, of the folks, and so it's with that.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend. All right, with that, we are, we conclude general public comment, and where does that take us? Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
All right, the desk is clear. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Mr. Labange?
I want to let you know, on, uh, this date in 1915, they planted an oak tree on Western Canyon, and there's a plaque there, it's planted by the Los Angeles Women's Club. This morning, I visited the oak tree. It's healthy and strong, and it stands tall. It's one mile from Las Feliz Boulevard in Griffin Park up Western Canyon. And there's also a two-mile tree and a three-mile tree, so I think I didn't want to let this day pass without saluting that great oak on Western Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Any other announcements? Mr. Weston?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, thank you for recognizing me. I just wanted to get up and, and, and indicate that there was a tragedy in my district on June 10th. We had a young lady, 31-years-old, Angel Carver Rubian, I think it is, who was in a vehicle, she was struck by another vehicle. The vehicle left the scene. She was, uh, she died with leaving her two-year-old child in the, I guess, knocked out of the car or what have you, unattended. Under normal circumstances, it, you know, I would have risen earlier to request an adjourning motion, but because of the good work of Mr. Buscayino and yourself, we already have a hit-and-run reward policy in place. But I did want to rise, talk about this 31-year-old mother's whose life was snuffed out, probably walking distance from my, uh, home, and I want her and her friends and the family to know that this incident might be the first of the motion that you and, uh, Mr. Buscayino put in. This may kick that off, so I did want to say that we will be, that a reward will be issued, and if you're out there, the individual who committed this crime, you, it's best to just turn yourself in. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, and with that, Mr. Weston, I, I don't think any of us actually wanted to be the first recipient in our district on a hit-and-run fatality standing reward motion. We do have a $50,000 reward motion, but our prayers, our hearts, our thoughts certainly go out with the family, and, uh, if anybody out there in the general public have seen anything, have any information that could lead to the apprehension and conviction in this heinous crime, in this cowardly crime, where you fled the scene and left a mother to die, and, uh, please, and a two-year-old baby, um, anybody has any information at all, please contact Los Angeles Police Department. We do have a standing reward motion now for $50,000 for that. Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? I've got one. I've got a special visitor here with me today, my wife, Jane, who's sitting up here, is with me today, so if we could, yes, give her a special round of applause just for being my wife, yes. And, uh, with that, do we have any adjourning motions? Mr. Labange, so if we can get everybody in council to please rise for adjourning motions, please, everybody in council chambers, please rise out of respect for those who have come before us and left us too early. We'll start off with Mr. Labange.
Members Courtney Mullin, Courtney Margaret Mullin, the great daughter of our very own Pam Mullin and Peter Mullin, who many of you know, passed away at 35-years-old of a parrot heart attack. She was much-loved. She attended Marlboro School, great activities there, and on to UC Santa Cruz, where she cultivated a love of botany and plants. I was able to attend her funeral yesterday, get there at the very end to say my prayers for her. She was loved, and she will be missed. I ask to adjourn in memory of Courtney Margaret Mullin.
Great, thank you. Looking to my right, Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I'd ask to be adjourned in memory of Enel Woods, who passed away June 16th, 2015, at the age of 93. She was born in 1921 in Smith County, Texas. She graduated from Jefferson High School in 1941. Later, she married Robert Woods. They moved to Tyler, Texas, where they settled and expanded their family with three children. In '65, they moved to Los Angeles, where she studied at Southwest Community College. While living in Los Angeles, she became involved in many different community programs. In her later years, she became a staple of programs adhering to seniors. She went from president of the Senior Club of Affiliated Committees of Aging for the Los Angeles County to its area director. She served that position until she retired in 2010. She also was on the Board of Directors of the Empowerment Council, Southeast Neighborhood Council, while serving as the chairperson of the Green Meadows Park Advisory Committee. She and former councilwoman Jan Perry oversaw the building of a needed community center, which offers programs for both seniors and youth. She completed Southwest Area Community Police Academy and Operation South Bureau Community Police Academy and served on Los Angeles Police Department Advisory Boards. She was honored by many different organizations and committees, including the Los Angeles Region of ARP, the Affiliated Committee of Aging, the Los Angeles Olympic Neighborhood Program, and the Los Angeles County Area, uh, Los Angeles County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. She also received a political recognition as the Democrat of the Year in the 52nd Assembly District of LA County. She survived by her children, Robert Junior, Jimmy Woods Gray, currently a fire commissioner in the City of LA, and Geraldine McReynolds and five grandchildren.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just add on to that, that adjournment, Mrs. Woods was certainly a real icon in our community. In fact, three weeks ago, I recognized her as a she-Ro in, in our community, and so I just want to join in mourning her loss. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Looking to my left, seeing no other adjourning motions, council is officially adjourned. Have a great weekend. Be safe out there. Thank you very much.